Nate, again, we'll give Brian a few minutes to join. Okay, we are recording. Welcome, everybody. Tonight is the Town of Bluff Planning and Zoning regular, Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting. It's Wednesday, November 1st, 2013, 2023, and it is 6:02 PM. We're meeting virtually. Let's start with the roll call of Planning and Zoning Commissioners. This is Amanda Podmore, Chair.
Marcia Hayden-Feld.
Ed Dobson.
Malia Collins.
Thank you, and Brian will be joining, and then Town Council.
Luann Hook.
Thank you, and I think that's all from the town. Welcome all of our guests tonight. Great to have you. I'm going to drop the agenda in the chat for those who haven't seen it. But we will start our meeting this evening with a public comment period. So if somebody would like to give a public comment, you have up to three minutes to do so. So either unmute yourself and request to make a comment, or put your name in the chat, whatever is easiest for you. Okay, going once. Going twice. Okay, my close public comment for the evening. Thanks, everybody. Okay, let's start with approval of the meeting minutes from our October 18th regular meeting, so I can share my screen. Is that zoomed in enough for folks, or a little more?
One more click.
One more click, okay.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Okay, and this was our short meeting because there was a candidate form that evening. So I'll just scroll through, see if we have any comments. Okay, no comments in here.
Just, just a totally silly one that I thought I corrected, but it didn't stick. Go down an inch to the word. Just go down right there. Old Business, the Aviation Ordinance. So just a typo, and I thought I fixed it, but it didn't fix.
Yeah, we're not like ordinances.
I, I move to approve the October 18th minutes as presented.
Second.
Second from Ed. Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, any abstentions? No, no no's. Okay, motion passes with four yeses. Thanks, everybody. We stopped sharing. Okay. Up next, under Old Business, item number one is an update from Town Council. So Luann, can you give us any planning and zoning relevant updates?
Sure, yeah, and we did do a very shortened meeting last time. And so there are a couple from earlier in October. The only thing I mentioned last time was the aviation ordinance had passed. And then on October 10th, looking at the, the old school, the UDB group is looking for a new director and a new accountant. They, we approved a storage container for the community center for storage for chairs and whatnot for that room that's turning into the food bank. So that is up there. I saw it go by anyway. I have not seen it actually at the building. And then lights have been purchased for the community center for the dark sky, thanks to Malia. October 17th meeting, we, we did do a UDOT Trail Division meeting in Moab for the active transportation plan to get the trail through town. We did have representatives from Bluff. Ann was online, Debbie West. I did already tell you all this? Am I on the wrong one? No, this is.
Well, I know you, I know you did tell us about that meeting.
I did, okay. Okay, well, they will decide in October or in November, December, whether or not we're prioritized for that. Well, there's nothing in between except for, let's see. The October 24th work session was again on the, the trail. We worked through a work session, a couple of questions from the council in that we've got new edits out and the vote will be on November 7th. And then we also discussed the EPA grant in that work session for the old school. And that Melissa Eggy is the project manager for it, assigned in the grant. And so they discussed that a little bit on, on how that moves forward. Okay, so I think that that's it unless there was something that I was missing in between the last time I saw you guys, because I know I had an update for you that I had flagged for the last meeting and I didn't give it. So anyway, maybe it's all just repeat stuff that keeps coming up on our agenda.
No, it could be me, I'm bad too.
No, it's probably just repeat items, but anyway, any questions?
No, my, my comment, Luann, is what I think happened is you explained the Active Transportation Trail meeting information during our discussion of the Active Transportation Plan, not during your update, and that's where we heard you say it. Okay, so we're not crazy, it was just in a different order.
But are there any questions on anything that's come up that you've heard or, or interested in?
Well, the, the only other comment or question I have is the current status of UDB. We know UDB is doing its own thing in terms of reorganizing and getting, you know, their, their, their person hired and stuff. Where do we stand in relationship to that with this grant timing?
It's, it shouldn't affect it. I mean, because they, they have a part of it. It's a grant to both entities combined. It's part, it's really aimed at towns working with nonprofits. So, so yeah, they just, that was just discussed at our meeting that they're doing a little reorganizing, but yeah, they're, they're still listed on the grant and whatnot. And it's all moving forward, so.
Thank you.
And I had a question, Luann, for the Aviation Ordinance that was passed. I know it talks about a mileage buffer, like west of Bluff for aviation. I was curious if there's going to be like any maps developed associated with that? And if so, is there an update on those maps?
I haven't heard of any maps. What it was, was it's a two mile. Well, we do have maps. Erin had one in the ordinance, so I'm sorry.
Oh, there is a map.
Black comment, but yeah, she had one in the ordinance. And what it does is it's two miles from the Cottonwood Wash Bridge in all directions. So you had just put a circle there on, on any map really, and it's a two mile radius. And outside of that two mile radius, basically conditional use happens because there are conditions that have to happen to be outside the two mile. What didn't happen was no conditional use for inside the two mile.
Thank you for that. Okay, any other questions for Luann? Okay, thank you so much, Luann.
All right, you're welcome.
Okay, item number two is an update on non-compliance signs within town. So two different bodies of issues here. The first was, we've been aware for a while about like waving temporary, like banner signs being installed at Desert Rose and Bluff dwellings. And I finally got letters out to those business owners yesterday. We received two responses from each business owner via email today. So all of the commissioners should have those. Oh, sorry, I forgot to welcome Brian. Brian Whitney is, is in attendance now.
Hello, I'm here now.
Oh, Brian, sorry. So commissioners, you should have access to those letters. In the, the first letter from Jared Barrett, there's an interest in working with us on installing signs that would be compliant. Signs essentially advertising the cafe at Bluff dwellings. On the second letter from Amor Tumay for Desert Rose Resort and Cabins, he said he is denying our request to remove his signs. So I guess, let's talk about these two sign issues, and there's one other update I have. Any, any thoughts or responses from commissioners? Marcia, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to reference something that Jared was talking about in his letter to us where he said that he spoke to the mayor and at that time he wrote, quote, "the head of P&amp;Z, which I am not", but it was me and Ann. Ann and myself, Ann and, me and Ann had gone over to the desert, the Bluff dwellings in, in response to a request from Jared of a basic. Ann asked me to accompany her because his request was, I don't under, I don't like, no, I don't know what else I can do about the banners, instead of the banners. So the meeting was a general discussion of what the sign code says and what should happen. And this is over a year ago. This is last summer. And we went there and said, you can't have wavy banners. Oh, I don't like those, he said. And we said, great, let's, but what happened was, Ann said him, look, I'm not making them, you take them down today or anything. I'm telling you that they have to come down and you should come up with alternatives. And we discussed the ideas of how much signage he could have and therefore how much more was available to him in order to change his sign. The reason I'm talking about this is because I kind of, I, I'm a little confused or challenged by Barrett's saying, well, I don't like these and I don't know what I can do about them. And I, I don't like waving signs, but I don't know what I can do. And therefore you're making it difficult for me to run my business. My answer to him, to anyone who's asking about business signs is there's a, there's an ordinance in place for you to follow that means you should be designing and, and placing your signs, et cetera, into, into, that fit into that ordinance. And we've already discussed that over a year ago. So to be upset about it again when in fact we thought you were working on this to correct, I, I guess it just makes me feel bad because I thought we tried to work with him already. In the case of Amor, whose letter I didn't see until just now when you said it was there, his one minute argument or, or challenge last time when I asked him at the public hearing, or public meeting last time, he said, well, that's not what it says in the sign ordinance. It doesn't say the wavy flags or whatever. And my answer to him that I didn't give that night, but will tonight, is I challenge that. It says banners and streamers. And for him not to want to acknowledge that that means wavy banners, to me just seems nitpicking. I understand the frustration of a business owner who's trying to do the best they can to get the word out about their business. I have no questions about that. I was business owner until a minute ago. But I have an argument with, in this case, is there is an ordinance written. If I'm going to design a sign, I'm going to design it to meet that requirement. I'm not going to put up signs and then challenge that the ordinance doesn't say that or doesn't exist or doesn't allow for. We allow for a lot of signage. We allow you to, to broadcast what your business is doing the best way we know how and yet provide for the safety on the highway. I think waving flags are really dangerous on a highway pass through. We allow for ways for you to, to design things that, that meet the sign code and yet make the business a front and center, announce the business front and center. So I guess I'm just a little sad that we have to come to butting heads about something that I believe can be answered. There's my comment.
Thank you, Marcia. Appreciate that, and I think, I mean, all of us agree on this interpretation of our ordinance referring to signs like at Desert Rose and Bluff dwellings. Jared is essentially confirming our interpretation of the ordinance and that those signs are not allowed. Jared did reach out to me again today to say he's like open to talking more about sign solutions. So as a reminder, when I called, I called both Jared Barrett and Amor Tumay on Monday before I sent the letters to let them know the letters were coming. And I also let them know that we are currently updating our sign ordinance to add clarity and that there'll be opportunities for public comment now and at public hearing and other times. So just so folks are aware, we are looking at, at clarifying and updating that ordinance. I'm not sure next steps on responding to the two letters. I might, because it comes back to this enforcement question, might address it with our, with the town attorney just to see our next course of action. Would anybody like to see any particular next step or response? That, from the commission?
I, I agree with your idea of just reaching out to the attorney just because I think again it falls on that question of like, how is enforcement? Like, how do we bring about enforcement in these situations? I still just feel sort of like a gray area.
Marcia, go ahead.
No, I, 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 I agree. What I, what I find hard here is that we keep having to reach out to a legal official when we already have a document that tells people what they have to comply with. So my answer comes a little differently, and that is, and that reaches out to the word enforcement, which has been a discussion at P&amp;Z from time, from the time of the beginning. And that is that according to the, the official Bible that we use of, of, of politics in, in the state of Utah, and that is that the mayor is responsible for enforcement until we have, until such time as we have an official enforcement officer. The problem that I see, and this is where I do say we might have to call Chris McAnany, is that we don't have a or you will. And what happens is if we say to these gentlemen, and unfortunately it's, it's these gentlemen in this discussion because that's who we're talking about, the two businesses. If we say to those two businesses, you have to take them down now or else. Typically, a city code would have, you will pay a fine of, you will be yelled at in public, you will be put in the stockade. I mean, in other words, there's typically an or else. And since we don't have that, I'm kind of with you that Chris has to tell us what, how to say or else. Which, by the way, we have in our notes for updating on the sign code, the or else. But that doesn't mean we can enforce things. Yeah.
Yeah, so good point. Tomorrow, when we discuss the sign ordinance draft, we'll be talking about adding penalties and timelines and things like that. Now that we have a fee schedule in town, we can add things like this to it, so. Okay, any final like questions or thoughts on those two requests to take down those like temporary waving signs? No, okay.
I will make a comment.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Hey, I agree with what Marcia is saying about the, the enforcement statement because I feel like that's also something that we've been talking about as we've been drafting this. RV ordinances, like we need to be with, with the ordinances, where ordinances that we are creating, we need to have that enforcement role in there. And so, yes, I also agree that we'll probably just need to reach out to the town attorney.
Okay, thanks, Malia. Sorry, I didn't realize you were waving your hand. I thought you were saying, yeah. Okay, the other sign matter at hand was the ongoing communications between Planning and Zoning Commission, Steve Simpson and the town lawyer regarding the non-compliant, like billboard that was installed without a sign permit on Highway 191 across from Bluff dwellings. I just reached out to the town attorney just to remind him to give us some feedback and take a look at that. So he said he would be doing that. So I don't have any more firm updates than that. Sound good? Okay, all right. Any other thoughts on non-compliant signs in town?
Does that mean we leave everything alone until we hear from Chris? Is that kind of the, the last sentence in this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just Chris and Ann, since Ann is the mayor in charge of enforcement.
Exactly, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. Item three on our agenda under Old Business is update on the draft RV ordinance and then the changes to the sign regulations that are in our zoning ordinance. So we're essentially working on two draft ordinances, RVs and signs. We're going to be discussing those in depth during a work session tomorrow at 3:00 PM in person at the community center. Would any commissioners like to provide any other update on those in the interim?
Just, just to tell you that Malia and I did in fact get together again to clean and clean as much as we could. And I think we did as much, I think we did as much as we could. I believe that where we stand now is she and I can only discuss it so long without having you guys there to keep going. So we, you, you know, we've done it a couple of times now where we've gone through as far as we've gone. So we just want to make sure to keep going all the way through with all of you.
Great. Thank you so much for working on that. Go ahead, Malia.
And on top of that, I'd like to encourage all of our commissioners to review that document tomorrow before the meeting and come up with some good comments because there are quite a few things that Marcia and I get stuck at and we're like, ah, we need everybody's opinion. So please review that and look and write, write down some comments, please, because we are dividing our time.
Great. Peasy, peasy homework. Look at that RV ordinance and look at the draft updated sign ordinance that I shared around, so. Perfect. Okay. Item four, new business land use clearance applications. We did not have any. For the record, Josh Lamb had, in, in December 2022, we had approved his land use clearance for a building on his property pending proof of ownership of the land, and, and Marcia and I just received that proof last week. So he, he got that within a year of having his land use clearance. So we were good to just send the land use clearance finally to the county, so. Any questions or concerns about land use clearance from anybody? Okay, all right. And we did not charge Josh for that because he had, it was already approved in 2022 before our master fee schedule, so. Okay. All right, let's move on to item five, which is discussion and action on request for a sign letter for Cadillac Ranch or Kerry Harris. I will turn the floor over to our guests from Cadillac Ranch to like reiterate or explain their requests and how we can help with that.
Sorry, pushing the wrong button. So we, we had reached out to the DOT, let them know about the change in ownership when we bought the Cadillac Ranch on that sign. And they, well, actually, we just paid the, the fee for having the year of the sign. And then they said, oh, you're, you're new and Michael was there before. And I didn't get documents for the transfer of the, the sign. And so I need to get all the, the documents in order because of the change in ownership over the years. Because Charlie Purcell was the, the previous owner. I have all the other paperwork. They just need a, a letter from the town stating that it's on the approved site for that sign in the town. The DOT permit is active and there's no changes to the sign.
Okay, so no changes, just confirming ownership?
Yeah, just confirming location is where it's supposed to be.
Okay. Marcia, go ahead.
Yeah, Kerry, I would like to understand the ownership trail just a little more in as much as it, the sign sits on the Coral Sands, Coral Sands side of town. It has, and it has both RV parks listed, theirs on top and yours underneath. And all of that's fine, but I don't understand how the ownership went to you and didn't stay over at the Coral Sands side of things.
Okay, so when Charlie Purcell passed, it was part of her estate. Her estate went to Diana Loman. And Diana sold Cadillac Ranch to Michael, and then Michael sold to us.
So it still shows in whose name, way back to Charlie's name?
It shows Charlie's name still.
Okay, okay, so that's the first thing.
Yeah, Michael reached out and told them that he had bought it. And so then we have, we have the paper trail and that's already been submitted to the state, the paper trail of ownership.
Okay, but now, so the paper trail of ownership, you can kind of prove is what you're saying? Because it went with the Charlie Purcell estate and not with the pieces that, that Galen ended up with, that's, yeah.
Right, and, and Galen, I, I've got photographs from the state when they originally did that sign. It did have both, it's always had both parks on the sign.
Okay, okay, so.
Seriously, Galen owned both parks.
Right.
Right, right. It, it wasn't, yeah, no, I, I remember that whole thing when that happened, when, when Charlie passed. But I was just making sure that the sign we're talking about was in the Charlie Purcell line of, of ownership, and you can prove that part. Okay, part two. When you say that the sign is on the right or correct location, what do you mean by that? Whose land is it on? Where is it?
So the Town of Bluff, so prior to incorporation of the Town of Bluff, it was on the County Service District. And we, we talked a lot with the DOT because they still believe that it's on the County Service District. But when the Town of Bluff Incorporated, it's still in the County Service District, but now the Town of Bluff is responsible for that County Service District.
Well, it was signed over, yeah. The County Service District doesn't, well, the, the service area, not district, service area does not exist anymore. The town bought all of its possessions, including land, signed over. They don't know the document trail, but it was signed over. So the DOT, the DOT sort of still says County Service Area land when in fact it's town land.
Right, so that's why they want the letter from the town.
Okay. That answers my two concerns, ownership and location. My comment then to the chair, to Amanda and the team, is that this would not then concern planning and zoning if in fact they go to the town and say, okay, town, all we need is the letter of town ownership of the land and it's okay to have that sign on it as pre-existing. You know, we're, we're not looking at a sign code here. We're looking at a sign ownership. So my comment is, Amanda, that we recommend this to the town with no action on our part. That's mine.
Yeah, well, I think our action would be to submit a recommendation to Town Council that they write the letter. So I can go through the, I can send them the form. And like Kerry, I can pass along your email chain and everything to them. But I do believe if they're owner of that land, they should, it should go, it should come from them.
Right, that's where we went originally.
Oh, no.
Go to the Planning and Zoning.
Okay.
So, and I'm, oh, sorry. And that was my concern, Amanda, was that since Ian had sent her to us, I'm saying, wait a minute, we don't want any part of this. It's a land ownership thing, not a sign code thing. So that's, that was the difference, I think.
Yeah, it's not a zoning issue. It's a land ownership issue. So. Um, okay, I will communicate that to the town and have them write you guys a letter.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um. Do we want to have a formal act, formal vote on that? I guess I have it on the agenda as an action item. Someone want to make a motion for me to write that recommendation?
I motion for the recommendation for that land. Oh gosh, how do I word this? For the town to write a land ownership letter for Cadillac Ranch Kerry Harris.
Great.
I'll second that. I just, I just want to make sure we're not talking about, just so it doesn't come across as sign code. That's all I want to do. So I agree. I second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Ed, anything from you? We'll take that as an abstention. So for, motion passes with four yeses, one abstention. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Kerry. Enjoy your vacation. Looks nice. Okay. Um, item six on our agenda under new business is discussion on requirements for dirt moving activities within town boundaries. This was brought to our attention both by commissioners and members of the public that town of Bluff does not currently require, um, does not regulate or require any permits surrounding dirt moving activities on private land. Um, and we wanted to look into like best practices, what we should be doing. Um, I went ahead and emailed, um, the Blanding Town Council and the Moab Town Council. I heard back from the Moab Town Council and they let us know they do have a permit process in place. And so I didn't refresh my mind on that, but, um, that's the extent of the research and action I have taken. Do any commissioners have any updates, questions, thoughts on that? Go ahead, Marsha.
I just, I just recommend you, when you sent that Moab one around, I kind of liked it as a, as a basic idea. And I'm sorry, I didn't pull it up for tonight either. But the idea is that what we're saying is we don't care what you do on your land, moving dirt around. We just care if you're moving dirt around because you're building something and you're going ahead and doing something without permission. So somewhere there's a line that says, move all the dirt you want, but don't, I don't know, don't install a pipe in it. Don't, uh, put a septic, you know, how much can you do before you get permission? And I think the Moab sample was a good idea. So that's my just.
Thanks. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I also, I looked through that Moab one a bunch because I was very interested. I like their model, but the, um, I appreciated that they had, um, it seemed to have a fifty yard cutoff in terms of needing to have that grading permit. I think Malia just said something about that too. And I thought that that was interesting because it also seemed like they were phrasing it in respect to and reference to like flood plains and washes. And I do think I agree with you, Marsha, that it is about, you know, kind of making sure people don't get a, ahead of themselves with projects. But I also do think it's important to understand that like our land, our landscapes all kind of connect to each other and you can scrape enough earth away to kind of make those things. And I think that fifty yard distinction is very generous. Fifty yards of dirt to move is, I was looking up what fifty yards is, and it seemed like it's three commercial like dump loads. It's a humongous amount of dirt. So it doesn't really, I like that number because it doesn't really limit people who would be doing smaller things on their land or grading, small amounts, but it does sort of set a kind of a limit of like, well, if you're getting into the world of rearranging the landscape on your property, you need to be at least informed that it's not going to negatively affect your neighbors and the drainages. And so I thought Moab's model was really great.
Thanks, Brian. Um, Malia, do you want to speak to what you're sharing?
Sure. So I, the first thing I shared is actually just the response from Moab for what they had said. And I think Brian just covered that really well. And then the, um, the hyperlink that I put in there is actually the international. What was it? They had referenced the international building code appendix J. And it has some beautiful definitions and reasons that permits are required and just all of the sketches and things within. So I think that's something that we should pursue, and this is definitely a great thing to reference. I like that it is the international building code.
Thanks. Yeah. Marsha, go ahead.
No, following up, I love, I B C is used for almost all codes and zoning and zoning ordinance stuff. And so that's a great find, Malia, um, and we should use it. And my suggestion would be let's put that on the next set of working documents we do, because we have two that we should finish first. But, um, and include in it demolition work. In other words, a construction ordinance or whatever we call it, that includes earth moving, demolition and site, well, site preparation goes with earth, earth moving. But all of the things, because I, Brian's absolutely right to reference flooding and other things. So I really like the idea that we're missing an ordinance that covers a bunch of the before and afters of, of construction. And I like that.
Thanks. Yeah. I mean, it really sounds like, well, Ed, Ed, do you have any comments? Okay, it sounds like we're all on the same page with, um, reasons to have, have an eye on these bigger dirt moving issues, um, for reasons of knowing what kind of buildings going on, public safety, um, sensitivity to neighbors and flood plains watershed issues. So. Um, I mean, the way I see it, the RV ordinance is taking the most amount of time, signs going a little faster. This could be pretty straightforward because it is so kind of formulaic with some other places do. I think we could have all three signs, all three ordinances in one public hearing. So I was going to see if anybody on the commission would like to take on drafting this.
Yeah, I would be, and out of respect to the amount of work that Marsha and Malia have put into the RV ordinance, I would be happy to take on drafting.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Yeah.
So just noting, yeah, we wanted to talk about demolition, dirt removal and yeah, it sounds like it could be pretty simple if it just references international building code and things like that.
Sounds great. Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Um, okay. Any final comments from commissioners on that? Okay. All right. Item seven on our agenda is discussing our twenty twenty-four meeting dates. Um, so typically, you know, we meet on the first and third Wednesday of every month, excluding weeks in which there's a public federally recognized holiday. Um, we meet Wednesdays at six P M. Virtually. How is that? Working for commissioners, is, do we want to see any changes to that? I'm open to thoughts. Or suggestions.
Are we able to change it to a different day?
Think we are, um, just not, not a Tuesday, because that's that would be a possibility. Yeah. Is there a date that works better for other people?
I'm contemplating Thursdays, but I also know that Thursdays are sometimes parts of weekends. So. What, what are others thoughts on Thursdays?
I'm retired. Every day's a weekend.
Well, I gotta try that out someday, being retired. Yeah, I know. But first I gotta have a job for a while. Um, I would say that Thursdays would be great for me too. I mean, I work on Wednesdays, but I've been able to, I have good flexibility here and they've been very generous to let me log in for meetings, but um, you know, Thursdays would be, I wouldn't have to feel like I'm uh, logging into something else. So I'd be fine with Thursdays too. But Wednesdays also still are working.
Okay. Um, Thursdays would be good for me. I, I tend to have, I have, there's a work meeting on Wednesdays that I miss almost every time because it's this time. Uh, Ed, what if, do you have any, are you there, Ed?
Good either way.
Okay. Well, um, why don't we just as a kind thing to do, run this by town council? And then Malia, can you check the community center calendar about that?
Well, um, could we throw it out also to the, um, to Kathleen and A V. To say our Thursday's okay?
Thank you.
Um, it, this, you know, this starts in a couple of months. It would start in January because we have to do it by the year. And what I'm saying is no one knows what they're going to do for the entire year. And everyone gets to miss a meeting once in a while, but if Thursdays seems more open for everyone, it sounds like a great move. Let's make sure our backup help can help us too. And see if it, yeah.
Thank you. That works for me.
Great. Thanks, Kathleen. Craig, are you, what are your thoughts on if we move to Thursday?
Was that to be?
Uh, sure, Craig. We could email him if he's not able to like.
And he, I think Craig doesn't always have to be available for every meeting once it's set up, but at least we could know if it's the worst day of the world.
Yeah. Luann, what about you as a town council member?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with either Wednesday or Thursday, but what I was going to ask, um, because town council also will be reevaluating dates of their meeting. It does always coincide with Tuesdays, county commission and all the rest. Um, so I'm just wondering if you guys would also have Tuesday as an option, like if town council moved town council meeting, if Tuesday was a good one. That, that was my only comment.
Oh, okay. If town council moved.
Yeah. If it wasn't on Tuesday, would you guys like to be Tuesday if town council was Wednesday or Thursday?
I believe, Brian, you still work on Tuesdays, right?
I do, yeah. I work Monday through Wednesday.
Okay. I think Thursday is our preference. But, um, so I will email town council just as um, I think you guys, Luann, you probably trump us. So if you make, if you choose Thursday, we'll reevaluate, but.
Uh, yeah, I, I doubt it. I just was basically giving possibly another option. I don't know what the new troops will want to do and whatnot. So.
Okay.
Can, and so Amanda, would it be you writing to council to say, is that okay? And then us voting it into practice next week so that we set the schedule to be printed for it? Cause Erin, I think has to print it and stuff and publish the schedule.
Yeah, we still have a ton of time to give notice on that. So we will confirm it next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um. Last item on our agenda, uh, second to last is items for our next agenda. So we know we'll, we'll have meeting dates. Um, we'll probably have an update on non-compliant signs and update on RV ordinance and sign regulations. And then maybe update on a dirt moving ordinance. Um, what else would folks like to see on that meeting?
I know that in the past, we've talked about solar, uh, renewable energy stuff. Just throwing that out there to keep that in our minds. I know that we just brought up the dirt moving and all of those other things. I wonder if we could tuck that in with any others or if that is its own thing.
Yeah, we need an intern.
I was, I was thinking that that could be a good one to set as our goals when we meet in January, that we always set goals for the year. That could be a perfect, we, if we come together on some of the stuff that's on this list today, we would be virtually done with it by, or you know, done with the, the process of it through the end of the year. So January goal setting, we could put renewable energy as a new field for us.
I like it.
I like it.
Yeah. That's a, yeah, I think we want to keep moving on that. It's a, I think it's a passion of a lot of ours. So, and we've, we're getting requests about it. So. Um, okay. I guess we will, it's our next meeting is November fifteenth.
Yeah, that's my birthday. I'm very, that's the other thing I want to have on the agenda is my birthday.
Should we have an extra long meeting that night to celebrate your birthday?
Yeah, I think we should have at least a two to three hour meeting, just in celebration of my birthday.
And virtual cake, of course.
Yes, exactly. One that I can't eat, but I can look at.
Maybe we should have that one in person so that we can have actual cake.
Well, now you're talking.
Yeah, but we have to have it at the clinic.
Oh, right. That's a good point. Yeah, that's true.
Um, well, I think that, I don't think we'll quite be at like twenty twenty-four planning at that meeting. So we'll keep, I think we'll keep pushing the solar piece in the twenty twenty-four planning till maybe December, but.
Something about that, that I'm just thinking of is, uh, um, the federal laws that are going into effect that are going to be encouraging people to do solar that I think starts in January. Because doesn't it make it a lot of reimbursements in January?
Oh, like incentives.
Incentives, that's the word.
These are all the ones that came from the, whatever the administration passed.
Yeah.
I think we're looking more at like large scale development though, but I guess we should have a discussion about making sure that our code incentivizes solar, small scale solar development, if that's something that we want. So.
Yeah.
I, I agree, Amanda. I think we are talking about develop actual, um, energy development kinds of things. But we absolutely should make sure it covers neighborhood, um, updates for either personal homes or businesses or, yeah, so I think it'll need everything.
Okay. Great.
Okay, thanks. That's all, that's my only word on that. Okay.
Thanks, Malia. Anything else for that next agenda? Okay. Um, item nine, other, any other topics to bring up? Marsha, go ahead.
Just a very silly one. If you look right below the word other on our agenda, it says requests for additional or modifications. It should be requests for additions or modifications. So just a typo on our agenda. And I looked at that when I saw the word other.
Nice. Thank you. additions or modifications. Great. Okay. Got that. Cool. Okay. Otherwise, we will all be meeting tomorrow at the community center at three P M. For a work session. Um, public is welcome to attend. We just won't be taking comments. Oh, yeah, Malia, go ahead.
Hey, um, so at our last meeting, Marsha and I were emceeing and we changed the right to the meeting that everyone could join. And I noticed that it's still like that. So I do just want to bring that to your awareness. Um, if you want to keep it that way, then that's totally fine. But you are also welcome to move it back to what it was, where it was. They had to ask for permission. But Luann, you can let me know if, what your thoughts are, or if you've got any texts of people not being able to get in. Cause maybe that solved the issue.
Yeah, I haven't had anybody complaining this since the last couple of meetings. So I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I think whoever's the actual host can still block, you know, if we get scammers in or whatever those guys are called. Crash a meeting.
Right.
But it's just, it, uh, in my mind, it, it kind of solved the problem of an open public meeting. Like if you were in person, you just walk in. You can be there ten minutes early or whatever. So anyway, it's worked fine on my end.
Okay. Luann, do you have the option, I'm just curious from your email account, um, to, to remove callers from this call? Like if you hover over somebody's name, can you remove them?
Who, me?
Yeah.
Oh.
Cause you're logged in with your town email. I'm just curious.
I don't think so. Let's see.
If you hover over like the three little dots.
I do have the three dots. Oh, let's see, let me see. Uh, who should I try to remove?
Does it say you can remove?
Yeah, it says I can remove from this call.
Great. Just checking. Cause I, I didn't log in through the planning and zoning email today, so I don't have that authority. So next time I will make sure I do that. So.
I'll check that on our town, um, one too, because that, that's interesting. Cause that, that would be its use as if somebody was crashing it, which we've had. We've had a couple of those even with our systems. So.
Yeah. So, okay. All righty. Any final thoughts from folks?
There is a marathon. There is a marathon this weekend that will be in town, uh, finishing at the, the old school. They'll be coming right into there and the highway will be closed at that, during that morning stretch coming down through Cow Canyon. They'll be diverting people around the top Bluff Bend Road and around past the mission. They were looking for volunteers, but other than that, just.
Okay, thanks.
It's been coming here for years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just a different name now.
Okay. All right.
Move to adjourn.
That's second.
Second. Who got it?
Um, okay. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned at 6:52 PM. Have a wonderful evening.
Have a good one, everybody. See you tomorrow.